The meeting to order for Wycomico County Legislative Session 2023-12 for June 20, 2023. Those who'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come.
I will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
Give us this daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Any corrections, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. And also on the agenda, we have the Certificate of Recognition of the Parkside High School Baseball Team for winning the state 2A championship, which is absolutely great, and the Paul Farmer Sportsmanship Award, but they could not be here today, and they're coming in July, correct, Ms. Hurley?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, so they'll be here in July. But we do have proclamations to read for three other students. We have Jeff and Joe and Josh are going to read these. The first one is for Kareem Camandego. Here? No? Okay. How about Haley Elliott? No?
She's in basic training over there.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
And then we have Jordan Dickerson. Okay. If we would, if we could each read the proclamations at the podium, if you don't mind, in that order, so that at least we can present it publicly, even though they're not here to accept it, and we can certainly get it out to them anyway.
Always important to recognize the good things that happen. So this certificate is recognition to Kareem Camandiego for winning the boys' state 2A pole vault championship in both indoor track and track and field. If you were here, we would say we congratulate him for his incredible athletic accomplishments and signed this day by the county executive and all members of the county council. Thank you, Kareem, for great work, wherever you are. Look forward to seeing you.
Good morning, everyone. This certificate of recognition is for Haley Elliott for winning the girls' state 2A high jump championship in both indoor track and track and field. We congratulate her on her athletic accomplishments, done this 20th day of June 2023, and it's signed by the county executive and all the county council members. And Haley, thank you for your service. Good morning. It's always a pleasure to recognize our students for their outstanding contributions and getting involved. So this is for, from the county council of Wycomico County, Maryland. It is a great pleasure that the Wycomico County Executive and members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certification, certificate of recognition to Jordan Dickerson for winning the boys' state 2A shot put championship. We congratulate you on your athletic accomplishments, and it's done on this 20th day of June 2023, signed by the county executive and the county council. Thank you.
Before we get into regular business, Ms. Hurley, I'd like to represent or recognize Dr. Michael Stoffer, Superintendent of Wycomico County Schools. Glad to have you here. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 79-2023. This is recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Aldis, Austin Meredith and Brooke Meredith. For each of the public hearings this morning, a public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and posted on the county's website. And we have Mr. Gary Pusey here, planning manager, if you have any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 79-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 79-2023. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 79-2023?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is the public hearing on Resolution Number 80-2023. This is recommending the approval of the sale of land preservation easements from Quinn Johnson.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 80-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Okay, this concludes the public hearing on Resolution 80-2023. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 80-2023?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 81-2023, recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Riverton Farms LLC.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 81-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 81-2023. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 81-2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. At this time, entertaining motion from council to adjourn from legislative session to convene as a local board of health.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Temporarily adjourned from legislative session, we now are convened as a local board of health. First item on the agenda is a report on the health of the county. Mr. Matthew McConaughey, our local health officer, pleased to have you here.
Pleased to be here. Health of the county, I'll just overview our services and everything that we've accomplished through this year, and then I'll get into the septic permitting update for y'all.
Okay.
As far as COVID, we have had 25,145 cases and 367 deaths that have occurred here in Wycomico County. The federal public emergency ended 5/11/23, what this means going forward. Vaccines will still remain to be covered for now. Insurance companies are not required to waive costs or provide free COVID-19 test. Treatment will remain covered for now. National and state reporting will change to weekly reporting. Positivity rate will be eliminated, as the CDC cannot require the reporting of negative test results moving forward, and the community level and community transmission metrics by the CDC will be discontinued. Flu, we had an early surge in hospitalizations starting in late October, early November. The week ending June 3, there were 72 total influenza deaths in the state, four of which were pediatric. 24% of the county residents were immunized against the flu compared to 30 statewide. RSV trended higher in the early fall, but also started to level out at the beginning of the year. There were no RSV hospitalizations in the state as of week ending May 20.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why doesn't the state release information on the county level?
It does. It's just based on the number. So if there's a small number, it could be, that's kind of like releasing who has probably been in those data statistics. Does, did that make sense how I stated it? Okay, so say there's only been five cases in the county. Well, you know, four of those people, so it identifies them. It can be identified. So they did identify the data, and they set a limit or a threshold amount on how many then there needs to be in a county before you can report that number.
Okay, thank you.
As far as overdoses, we receive information through MDH file statistics, and we also receive a rolling count from the OOCC or the opioid operation command center. This data is subject to change based on verification through hospital records. Through, for the 12-month period ending in January 22, there are 49 fatal overdoses in Wycomico compared to 41 for the 12 months prior. For those same time periods, non-fatal opioid-related ED encounters were also down over 20%. Fentanyl continues to be the key driver of overdose mortality in the Maryland-Wycomico County, and 22 fentanyl was involved in 80% of fatal overdoses in the state. The COAT team, that's our community outreach addictions team, through the third quarter fiscal year '23, 64% of COAT teams' clients have been linked to treatment, and 92.3% of clients are still in recovery six months after their first encounter with COAT. So this is a great program, and we're looking forward to continuing on with this. Xylazine continues to be detected in the drug supply in Maryland. This is a veterinary tranquilizer that is added to fentanyl and/or heroin to extend effects of the drugs. Xylazine was implicated in one out of every five overdose deaths in Maryland, up from only 4.3% in 2009.
Have you noticed any of that?
In Wycomico County, have we noticed that? I think it is, has been a presence. We're looking for our CIT team and others to bring in our regional HIDA representative to give us a more complete update on the substance and analogs that are being recorded in this area, so I can provide more information. And hopefully, maybe next month, if the HIDA representative comes.
That's the drug they referenced, as like the zombie drug?
Yes.
Where you see just people just?
Yes.
Standing still in the middle of the street, yeah?
Yeah, that is correct. And Narcan will not work on the xylazine alone, but it's usually used in tandem with fentanyl. So Narcan should always be administered, and it will have some effect on the fentanyl, just not the xylazine. Access to care during COVID public health emergency, we allowed for increased enrollment Medicaid. Medicare is becoming, eligibility reviews are being hosted again. The state estimate that roughly 80,000 Marylanders will not qualify for Medicaid at renewal, or about 4.5% of those currently enrolled. Extrapolating that data down, there's an estimate of about a potential of 2,000 residents of Wycomico County may lose coverage over the next year. The community health indicators report, this is high-level population health reports. So the highlights were able to include fresh youth risk data. COVID-19 was third-leading cause of death in '21, but still exceeded by heart disease and cancer. Life expectancy is now 76.1 years in the county. That's 2.5 years less than the state, which has also seen decreases. Cancer incidence for colorectal and lung and bronchitis is increasing. Cancer mortality for all sites is also decreasing. Diabetes prevalence continues to be an issue for the county, up to 21, or up to 12.1% in '21. This is seventh-leading cause in the county. Teen births up again in '21, and the rates among Hispanic teens are six times higher compared to the white teens. Black, non-Hispanics mothers are more likely to have a cesarean delivery and have infants that are preterm with low birth weight. Our youth risk behavior survey, a survey administered every other year in Maryland to public middle school and high school students. The last robust survey was conducted in 2018 due to COVID. We have seen some positive trends. The current, those who currently smoke cigarettes has decreased, now reported 5.7% compared to 12.7% in 2014. Electronic cigarette or vape use has also decreased, 18.1% compared to 24.4%.
Is that maybe indicative of a possible national trend, or is that?
I think it is, and it's also with the implementation of the federal law of '21 for any tobacco or nicotine-related products. So I think the availability to acquire them has also decreased for the high school and middle school population.
And do you know whether or not it's sort of like possibly not a popular thing to do anymore, or? I don't know if that's.
It could be possible. I would have to look at survey results or kind of do a focus group on youth, or maybe the superintendent of the school system would be better able to address that question, being with the population.
Probably the cost.
That is, well, prices continue to increase, especially with the age change.
Maryland actually changed its rules, right? It was 18 by tobacco products.
It's 21.
Lifted up to 21. Was that three years ago?
Yeah, it was during the pandemic, so it, right around that time period.
Did you see a 7% or 8% drop? That's pretty incredible.
Yes, it is, and it is hopefully noticeable and a trend that will continue on. And hopefully, we can make strides with the adult population as well. Sexual activity has trended down as well. Currently sexually active high school, 18.9% compared to 30.4% in '14. The number of persons with 4+ in a lifetime has decreased significantly as well. So these are positive indicators. Some areas for improvement, some suicide risk indicators have increased for both middle and high school. Those that have reported sad or hopeless almost every day for two-plus weeks in a row said that they stopped doing usual activities. That has increased for high school from, to 38.1% compared to 14, where it was 27.8. And in middle school, 35.2% compared to where it was 22.1% in '14. We've also seen an increase of those reporting that they have considered suicide for high school, 23.2% versus 17.8, and middle school, 25.6% versus 20.6% in '14. We've also seen a rise in the amount of attempts for high school and middle school, 18 and 18.1%, respectively.
Do you think there's any need in Wycomico County for some type of a task force in reference to these particular, these are very scary, this is very scary data.
I think there are some things that are coming about that can help. I think a task force might be beneficial to address those. And I know that the county hospitals have put a priority involvement into pediatric care, psychiatric care, and there's also state funds and availability coming down through the Maryland Consortium, which I think would help with a hub-and-spoke model to maybe assist us with this.
Dr. Stoffer shaking his head. I know that the Board of Education is usually staying, I think, very much in the forefront of addressing a lot of our social issues, so hopefully that'll be a way to collaborate.
And the consortium, the idea is to have them directly involved in all the services and care, pretty much being provided to, to the school systems, and just having organizations and correspondents within the community that can help provide those programs and assistance.
Josh?
Just to say, do we, do you have any other data on, well, let me first say, nearly a quarter of our high school, you know, children or young adults seriously considering suicide is incredible. That's, you know, that's not a very, that's a kind of a damning statement on our, on our society. I guess I'm also a bit concerned, we did see numbers a couple of years ago, that among suicide for adults, agricultural community was, had taken a leap quite dramatically. It actually, it was like a 60% increase, and of course, we were one of those areas. I don't know if you have any data on adult suicide. I do know enough folks in the last couple of years who were, unfortunately, went down that path, but we are strong, we have been a traditionally strong agricultural community. I don't know if you know anything there, but.
That is definitely something I can look into. There's probably more data and statistics I can even just pull from the county health rankings. I don't have that fully printed out. I just had a cover sheet to discuss some of the highlights and negative trends. But I can definitely look at that. I think it's also important that we note that the update to the suicide number, the 988, I believe is what it is now, where you can quickly contact with somebody for service or to talk through something, mobile crisis, things like that, that we can provide for an individual.
Hopefully, we can do that, because the health department has such an excellent reputation. We did an outstanding job with COVID and with opioid alone. You know, even our COAT program, which you mentioned, that was recognized by the state of Maryland, and they used it as a template for other counties. It was that, that forward thinking and that progressed, and that's successful, and Wycomico goes purple. So we've shown honestly that when we try to address a particular issue in the county, we can certainly make a difference. So be anxious to see how we can work with this.
And that's something we can discuss, and I can work with the superintendent on potential things that we can do to help and give some guidance with the hub-and-spoken, the consortium going forward on how to address some of these issues. As far as our community health improvement plan, our four priority areas, we have access to care and health equality, behavioral health, and chronic disease and wellness. In our health equality and access, we're looking to increase additional access to healthcare and provide education and promote awareness of health equality, including policy recommendations. As far as behavioral health, we're looking to improve behavioral health through prevention, treatment, and recovery. So we're looking to reduce rates of suicide deaths from 11.7 per 100,000 to nine, nine per 100,000 population, reduce opioid overdose deaths, strengthen the integrated behavioral health primary care model through academic detailing visits and care coordination without at least 15 individuals in the hub-and-spoke program, and reduce the proportion of adults supporting poor mental health two or more weeks a month to 12%. So that, we are making and have plans and goals to address the suicide issue here in the county. And then, health ranking-wise, some positive trends. The county overall rankings for 2023 was 17, which is the highest the county has received since 2015. And I think caveat that may not have been presented before, but I believe it's not necessarily where we rank throughout the state. It's how we rank against ourselves. So that means the trend data from year to year, because each, each county has their own unique strengths and weaknesses. So it's important to compare ourselves locally and not holistically across the state. But we have had good trends. Preventable hospitalizations, the county has also decreased, down over 60% since 2020, and now we're lower than the state average. Some areas for improvement, STIs continue to be a significant issue in the county. The rate of chlamydia has increased 39%. The rate did fall significantly in 2020. We do still remain higher than the state average. Some additional highlights. Mental health providers, we, we have a significant, a good portion of mental health providers ratio for the population, and then, like I said, hospitalizations, and then some areas for improvement were the chlamydia and adult obesity rates. As far as some legislative session updates, the cannabis reform, medical cannabis stores will be able to obtain a dual license for recreational sales, sale tax set at 9%. Adults 21 and older may possess up to 1.5 ounces of cannabis in two marijuana plants. Gender-affirming treatment, expanded procedures relating to gender-affirming care covered under Maryland Medicaid. 988 crisis prevention, set aside 12 million in the 25 budget to fund the 988 suicide and crisis hotline, as I referenced earlier. Telehealth, coverage of telehealth is extended through June of '25. This includes adult-only telephone conversations between a healthcare provider and patient. Must be reimbursed at the same rate. Reproductive rights, since the constitutional amendment to the 24 ballot enshrined the right to abortion to the American Constitution. Maryland Health Benefit Exchange, Maryland Health Benefit Exchange and MDH will prepare a report by 10/31/23 comparing options for affordable healthcare and dental coverage for state residents ineligible for the Maryland Medical Assistance Program. The environmental health specialists alters their education requirement for environmental health specialists specifically that their bachelor's degree does not have to be in certain science discipline, as well as reducing the required number of science credits for hours from 60 to 30. This will hopefully assist with the recruitment of sanitarians across the state. Environmental Health System Support Act requires Maryland Department of Environment to conduct a study with an interim report in '23 and final report in '24 on the staff needs for environmental health specialists and local health departments. This act will also require MDA to provide a study on the implication of delegating MDS while in septic permitting authorities to the Maryland Department of Health. Commission on Public Health Establishment, establish a commission to make recommendations to improve the delivery of foundational public health services in the state by assessing these capabilities at the Maryland Department of Health and its local health departments. And one other one, starting effective July 1 of this year, is the House Bill 1080, which provides Medicaid service to noncitizen pregnant or postpartum women. They can apply at, when they have a positive test result and receive Medicaid coverage up to four months postpartum, and it will be a retroactive three months of coverage for the pregnant mother, and the child will then be covered for one year after birth. And that is the health update that I have prepared. Is there any questions regarding that?
Any questions? Yes, Josh.
Quickly, normally, we have some statistics on alcohol, I guess, use. Is there anything, I guess, that came out of that or anything to report, anything noteworthy?
Not that was noteworthy, so that would probably mark it as continuing on as the same. I can go back and pull some statistics for that. I apologize for not having that available.
Just curious question. Thank you.
Hey, Ms.
I have a quick question. Do you have health nurses still in the health department?
Like, community health nurses or?
Yeah.
We have community health workers, and then we also do have nurses providing family planning, vaccinations.
They go out in the community, some of them?
Some of them do. We do try and still do some community work as well.
I see some of the issues that you, you're talking about. I know years ago, they used to come to, when you had a baby, they'd come to your house for six weeks, but it seems like more of that would be.
So that, that's more towards our home visiting program.
Home visiting, yeah, and you see the, whatever's going on in the home.
Yeah.
That you might educate the parent.
And we do have that. We have our Healthy Families Initiative and a few others. So we do, we do provide that, that education and support for the new mothers.
It's your opinion, some of, some of the state bills I find disconcerting to a certain degree. The two in reference to environmental. to a certain degree. The two in reference to environmental health, um what's your take on the education requirements, changing the education requirements? From our perspective, it seems like it might make it easier for new hires.
Um I think it's fine. It, basically, this one um had a required, the, the change was you had like to have a lab and two different things. So you had to have a lab and say biology and then also a lab in chemistry. Uh well, now you could have two biology labs. You could take your ba- entry level and then your secondary course and you have a lab in both and you'd still qualify under these stipulations. So I think it's a good thing and it's opening up the pool of applicants um with, with expanding or reducing the, the requirement for that. Um and it gives a more holistic um approach where you can get somebody who may not, who may have been in a different field of study but found their calling in, in the field.
And the other one, I like, I really, uh it's, it's sort of um optimistic to see the state is even taking this into consideration, recognizing the problems we're having with health services here, especially as far as permitting, et cetera, as, as you're very familiar with. Um the second bill, I'm, I wish they could create a final report that was a little sooner than twelve, December of twenty twenty-four, right?
Yeah. Um we, we do have some plans and I've been in talks. Um I'll be part of a metro panel talking about workforce uh in the environmental sector coming up. Um and then uh that this overall thing, we're not the only county that has seen issues that counties throughout the state that have this issue. And I, that's why I believe the requirements have been changed and just trying to create a avenue where we, we can successfully onboard and bring in uh people into it as well as looking at the compensation level. I think that is probably another big study that, or part of the study that it will look on.
Okay. Well, if you need, if you need the council's assistance, we'd be glad and trying to help you um develop some type of advocacy group if you feel it's necessary. I know the Coastal Association of Realtors, you would have their ear constantly. Uh if you're looking for, you know, ground level support as, as well as any installers or contractors, um you're new to the area. So we'd be glad to help you with any information, any contacts you might need to, to help assist when, because I'm guessing they're going to be reaching out to the local jurisdictions, I would assume, for assistance.
Yeah. And I will say, um I guess, one thing, uh we, we have plans to get in contact with the installers uh here shortly because we'll be updating our uh process for septic permitting application um as a pilot through MDE. Um and it's more on the installer side. We're going more electronic um formatted. So we'll just have a conversation with them coming up in the future.
Great. A few, um, a few years ago, um MDE, the Health Department, uh held a public forum at this, at our civic center and invited the public and the installers, anybody with any concerns. I'm sure Realtors Association was there to go over the issues that they were having. Um I don't know whether you would be open to that idea or not. You know, you hear from a broad range of people at one time. MDE could hear from them what their concerns are. So.
That is definitely something we can look to do and have. Um I'm hoping with uh this new process that we can expedite, but I definitely plan to get together and it can be an avenue and opportunity to have that discussion. And that way, we can go back and see how to better adjust our processes to better meet the community's needs.
Speaking of process, I'll, I'll mention some, uh, there's two incidents that we had on the east side of the county. And, and I know you had a backlog. I understand you were short of help. But we had one gentleman or family waiting to put up a, a garage, pole barn garage, whatever. They didn't need a perk. They didn't need anything done other than somebody to show up and say, you can put it here because it's not in the reserve area.
Yeah.
It seemed to, it seemed to take them like six months to get there to do that. I had another situation, probably a couple of miles down the road, that where the perk had all been done. Everything was fine. All they needed was somebody to visit and make sure that the property had not been disturbed. And that seemed to take forever. That generated a lot of emails back and forth from those folks, the realtor, you know, and the Health Department, or why they couldn't just get somebody to say, nothing's changed, you know? And I understand, you know, the backlog of, you know, doing perks and things like that takes time. But it seems to me like when you have something so simplistic as somebody showing up and taking five minutes to say, okay, nothing's changed, or this is not in the, in the reserve area, you can go ahead, to make somebody wait that length of time seems, you know, that, that just says that, you know, you're not, they're not working. This was before you. Okay. So blame it on you. It happened before you. But that's um seems to be something that needs to be addressed.
And I mean, just, I don't know the situations personally, but you know, there are priority levels. And yes, it may be an easy thing done, but when things are higher in priority, it's harder to get to something that's not, not as um environmental hazardous or things of that nature. Um but we, we can definitely look on how we can improve the speed that we expedite and go through uh requests.
Ms. McConaughey, can you elaborate a little more on the meeting you're talking about with the installers?
It, I can. Um so we would just be meeting to go over and discuss the new process for the online septic permitting system that we're, we're piloting uh through MDE, uh just to give them an overview of how they will then submit an application. We're hoping this will expedite the process. Um we can do everything electronic instead of them having to come in and submit the paperwork and they'll get uh the permit electronically instead of having to mail it or anything like that. So hopefully cut down on some of the uh days with mailing or things of that nature.
Would, would they still be able to come? I mean, you, you gotta look at your installers. Your installers are aging. Some of them might have.
They will still be able to come in. Um and we'll look to the, eh, the future to hopefully be able to have um a system uh in our environmental health office where we could help somebody with doing an online application or anything like that and providing that troubleshooting if need be. Uh as far as the update on the septic permitting, um I'll give an update. Um so for the backlog, the ones prior to January seventeenth of this year, um we have completed two since our last report. Uh so, and if you look, um out of the twenty-four total open applications still, twenty are still in the hands of the owners. Um and four are open applications for other reasons. Um they may need a wet season or we haven't been able to get there to uh do a site eval, perk testing, things of that nature. Um really, in regards to why uh we're in the waiting period with um the owners, it could just be their uh funding issues. Um they may be reconsidering uh what they want to do, uh finding an installer. Um but we have had one completed that we issued and the owner did request to close that permit application out of the two that we've completed um since the last report. Um going forward, um we have a total of seventy-nine current applications. Um we've completed twenty-seven of those. Um and there is now an open, open applications of fifty-two. Um we've added seven since the last report. Um and we completed four since the last report. Um and all four of those being uh replacement systems. As far as land evaluations, we made a pretty significant headway um since the last report. Um out of a hundred, there's a hundred and eighteen um current applications. We completed four. Um the, the previous report, there was ninety-one applications received that the site visit had not been completed. Um and now that's down to seventy-eight. So a change, a significant change of thirteen. Um and you can see, we're working from the latest applications on down the list. Um so that's how we're going about that.
And who makes the decision for determination, the determination if it, you need to wait for a wet season for specific piece of property?
That, that's based off of the soil evaluations and the well, the, the wells within the county, looking at that water table. So if um a water table's higher or based off of our historical data off those wells, we know we have to wait for a wet season in those, those areas. Um because if we would perk in a dry season, it may work and it may be fine. But once a wa- a wet season comes and the water table's high, then you would have contamination of groundwater through the uh affluent that would be coming from a septic system.
So you couldn't adjust that knowing the, the um water level?
Yeah, we have to wait for the, for the wet season to properly assess because the well may be here and we're, we're assessing it for a surrounding radius or diameter from, from that, that central location. But it ebbs and flows through each property. Um and we can't verify or say a hundred percent certain that just because this is here, well, you may be on elevation rise or you may be in a depression in this area. We, we can take a guess. But do we really want to guess with the, with uh somebody, with an individual's health or with the health of the watershed?
So if we go three years without a wet season, somebody has to wait three years to get a perk?
That's correct. And that is.
The science and technology that's out there, they can't, they can't adjust that.
That's correct. And that's based off of what Comar says and we have to abide by the regulations. Uh that is all I have today. Oh, I do have one more piece. Um sorry.
You're okay.
Um uh concerning the questions, um we do have one new hire. Uh they will start the si- six twenty-eight. Um what the other one declined the position. Uh M D E, M D, M E S uh funding, um they're currently funded through vacancies that we have, through our vacancies of positions. So that's how, how they're funded. Um no new funds have been allocated uh to the Health Department for this. This has already been in our budget. Uh going forward, we still do have some vacancies. Um so we may uh still offer for them to come and assist us. Um M E S through the, this cooperation has, has done thirty-six septic permits and twenty-seven site evaluations have been started um with our assistance.
So how many has did thirty-six?
Uh thirty-six septic permits have been completed. Yeah.
That's, that's, I mean, that's pretty promising.
Yes. So um we probably will continue on um with this joint venture um until we become fully staffed and can do the work uh solo.
How's that funding? Because I know it was fifty. They thought it was thirty-eight.
Yeah. Funding is twenty-eight and we're loo- looking at about a roughly a breakdown, about five thousand for administrative and then the twenty-three will be the direct onsite working and everything.
And with the, with the allotment, will that send us through this year or is it going to be?
Uh, we should be fine, um because this is all based off of our um vacancies. So we should have the funds available to provide for that and additional. Um and then there is a question about my thoughts on state requiring mound systems and holding tanks. Um I, I think it's a needed thing. Um because it, we're here to protect the environment and people's health. Um if the mound system is a conventional system, um it's just adding the additional layer of substrate to the existing soil level, which provides for the necessary percolation and diffusion of the, of the runoff. Um and holding tanks, as unfortunate as they are, are our last option and they are kind of time gated until city water or sewer can get to, to it or until a county plan comes into place that can handle it or a new alternative solution um comes available to be able to implement.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for because it, it's a hard, uh, it's a hard one to defend from your perspective. When you see honestly what a mound system, Joe and I visited a neighborhood, a neighborhood in, near Delmar where the, right near the entrance of this neighborhood, they put a, you know, eight-foot mound system in or six or eight-foot mound system right in the front yard. Now, the individuals were, who were, who we met with, who'd lived in the neighborhood, said, we know that his property value is now worthless. He will never get what he paid for, for that house ever again. But not only that, but they were concerned about their property values since that was the first house going into the neighborhood. Like, who's going to want to live here?
Well, I have to put in a mound system later down. The person buying the house eventually may have to do the same thing.
Right. And will someone even, will a realtor even have any chance going into that neighborhood with that, with that hanging over their head?
Uh I will say it is a conventional system. Um and it is an option for places that have poor soil quality. Um yes, they can be not visi- visually pleasing.
Sure.
Um but it is a functional system that works. Um and it's more based on someone's aesthetics if they don't agree with it. And yes, I do understand. Um I live in a neighborhood that has one. Does it personally bother me? No, it doesn't because I know they're doing what they have to, to protect, you know, the community. And it, it's a better alternative than a pump and haul agreement.
This is, I think, creates so much frustration uh within the community, especially a rural community. And not like the mound system, but the holding tanks, when you're trying to sell a house and the next thing you know, all of a sudden, thirty thousand dollars has been added to the cost in the negotiations. You think you have a signed contract and then all of a sudden, the health report comes, health department report comes back. You know, it blows up a deal. If someone needs thirty thousand dollars to put a holding tank in, it's not going to happen.
That's, you know, I, I'll visit homes before they're sold sometimes, you know, in our, in our business. And I tell the people, before you sign a contract, before you even list your home, get your inspection done on your septic first. So you know what's, so you know what's ahead of you. Um but I, you know, the mound systems is interesting and I understand how they work. But if they work if they're this tall off the ground, correct? Three foot, four foot, eight foot, six foot, why wouldn't they work if they were in the ground, if the dirt's removed and that type of soil was put in there?
Well, that's the key. You're removing that dirt. So you're taking away that, that layer. So if you're taking three feet of dirt away, you're taking out the valuable material that's used. So it, it's saying, your septic can't work at this level, right? So you're making it sure that it works at this level. So even if you took away three feet, well, you just have to add three additional feet of the added material. Does that make sense?
Well, they say, they say that the reason is because of the soil. So if you replace the soils that's there with soils that work, and that's what they do a lot of times.
Yes, but then you don't have the com- the compacted material. It's like a fill. Uh so it's not compact. It doesn't have the root structures um from plants and anything like that. Um and it, it's not, not compacted to the degree that would make it a sufficient um.
Yeah. Yeah. Understand, I understand what you're saying.
I, I, trust me, I know.
You know, I talked to a lot of installers and installers say, it doesn't make any difference if it's this high off the ground or this high off the ground, you know? It all drains, it all goes down. You know, and a lot of them are put in fields where there isn't root system. So that's, you know.
A couple of years ago, there was some research being done to see if you could put native switchgrass over top of drain fields as a way for um nutrient uptake, but also really good, holds the soils together for, you know, compaction in order to help better filter. I don't know where that, where that, where that hap- where that went, but um that was actually really beneficial, especially for the, you know, places like the Lower Shore. Our soils are so very different than the rest of the state. You know, it's just sand here. Everything goes straight down. So um that might be worth, I don't know if we can check into that. The other thing I'll say is just to make an important point, we should, you know, right now, the only thing that is preventing more homes in my district, you know, areas like if you know, or, you know, where um specific gravity and, and rise-up coffee, all that area behind and, and that, um, that goes from Parkside to Bennett. You know, most of those homes, a lot of those homes, all there in the President Streets, they're all on septic system. They should be attached to, they should be into the city. Um but the homeowners keep calling me and saying, hey, I want to get in, but I can't, I don't know how to navigate the process. So what we need to do as we continue to move forward is to.
It's expensive.
Um yeah, especially, it's expensive, especially a lot of folks have, have learned that as soon as they're going to sell their home, um where they want to be in the city of Salisbury, but they just haven't been able to make. been able to make, you know, it, it's a government issue of where two bodies aren't talking to each other very well. The more that we can, as we go forward and have a consolidated effort to try to make sure that we're hooking up septic systems into public sewer, I think there's a lot of homeowners, pardon me, there are a lot of homeowners who have told me specifically they would love to be in the city if they can, it's just, you know, there's, there's rules there, it's not as easy. So, I'd love to see us continue to work well with our municipalities, as well as we, you know, as we continue to expand out our own plans to hook up as many of these as possible.
I think that's definitely something that can be brought up and talked about in the, the sewer master plan, that's going into place now, and how, how that coordination, and maybe your users' guide on how to navigate those issues for the community.
And I think we would mind seeing the pay for, pay per service, Josh, we just don't really, we just don't see the justification for the annexation. In other words, they want the benefits but not the cost, right?
For those who want to annex, it'd be good to help them. I, I do want to.
I'd like to start something.
I do want to say thank you, too. This is the best report that we've seen, to be able to see detailed information, exactly what's happening, and to see it concisely, succinctly put down. Thank you very much for this.
And I would say you can thank my epidemiologist, Christina Gray, because she's the one that put this together for me, so she did a fantastic job.
Bring her with you next time.
I will.
Congratulations on getting bull lips opened.
Oh.
That was a, that was a task.
Well, we managed to see eye to eye and follow the regulations that were in place, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. McConaughey, we really appreciate it.
Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Entertaining motion to adjourn from local board of health reconvenes to legislative session with Wacomico County Council.
Second.
In favor? Next item, Ms. Sterling, thank you.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 82-2023, submission of an appointment to the Adult Guardianship Review Board and the appointment of Marie T. Shea, R. N., Ph.D., as a member of the Adult Guardianship Review Board. This board reviews public guardianship cases every six months and makes recommendations to the court to either continue, modify, or terminate the guardianship.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 82-2023.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 83-2023. This is, this is extending an audit contract mine between Wacomico County, Maryland, and PKS and Company, P.A., for fiscal year 2023, and we have Ashley Stern here with PKS and Company, if there are any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 83-2023.
Move.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. The, Ms. Stern, if you have a second, or Ms. Stern.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Would be, the term of this contract is a fiscal year 2023?
It is fiscal year 2023.
Normally, we have, I believe in the past, we've had three-year, three-year contracts?
We have.
But we're only doing a one-year contract this year.
Yeah, for the time being, we're just trying to do, to extend the current contract for one year before we can ascertain what a three-year contract would look like.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Any comments? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 83-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 84-2023. This is to engage the services at professional recruiting firm. As you guys are aware, the internal auditor resigned from his position in January, and we've, we've advertised this position on multiple job sites such as Indeed, Trampurst Jobs, Jobcase, ZipRecruiter, and many others. We also advertised it in the position, we also advertised the position in the local newspaper, and with the Purdue School of Business, with Mako, and the position is posted on the county's website. We are getting some applications in, but the majority of them do not have the certifications that are required for the position, so I'm asking that we seek the help of a recruiter for this position.
And we've done interviews.
We have done two interviews. We just didn't think they were a good fit.
Entertaining motion from council, I've already done it, entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 84-2023.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion.
I have a question, what's the cost?
I mean, 20% of the annual salary.
I mean, what's the cost of the recruiting firm?
It, that's the cost.
That's the cost.
20% of the annual salary.
What, for the first year?
It, it's just, you know, once we hire the person, whatever the annual salary is, it's 20% of that, and then there is a $1,500 setup fee as well.
No, wait a minute. 20% of the annual salary forever, as long as the person works here?
No, just one time.
One time?
Just 100%, period.
That's what I was getting at, that's what I thought it meant, so make sure, okay. Other discussion.
Thank you for your hard work on that, hopefully gets somebody to go.
Hopefully, one in.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 84-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes unanimously.